Sixteen present. That takes us to number two. Agenda, public hearing for rezoning portion from I-1 industrial district says with ten civil district parcel two-two-zero-one Franklin County property map before the seven located Green Hall Road, property fifteen point five eight. Apple put the Miller agent within last thought property owner. This is a portion of the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak in against this, please raise your hand. They've not recognized you come forward to the podium, state your name, and address your comments to the commission if you want five minutes to speak as anybody wishes to do that. Yes, sir. Please go forward.
Hello. My name's Neil Merritt. I'm a resident of Green Hall Road next to the quarry. I have a list of petition here if y'all want these, a name signed opposing the quarry. So, in order to make this decision, to zone or not to zone, right? I'd like to point out the Article Two of the zoning resolutions of Franklin County, part of that which says promoting such dis- this is the purpose statement of the zoning resolutions. Promoting such distribution of land development and utilization as will tend to facilitate and conserve adequate provisions for transportation, water flowage, water and supply drainage, sanitation, education opportunity, recreation, soil conservation, and fertility, food supply, and the protection of both urban and non-urban development, property, and building values. So, the rest of that that I didn't read, it pretty much just says make everybody happy, which, you know, I don't envy your job. So, but, it was, a key phrase here is such distribution of land. These are the zones, right, that the document is named after. Put things together of similar land use, right? Well, when you come to certain things like mining rock, it kind of gets hard to do, right? Because you got to dig rock where the rock is. So, the authors of the zoning regulations, in their wisdom, saw fit to create the I-1 industrial special type of zoning. So, in this, it allow is to, in one of the purposes that's allowed within that type of zoning is landfills and mining of rock. So, if we look at this purpose statement of Article Nine, which is the, contains the industrial district special, to provide suitable areas and standards for intense and potentially noxious industrial uses, including open land operations, while affording the maximum practical degree, practicable, excuse me, degree of protection of property values, land, air, and water quality, and other environmental factors for the long-term future of Franklin County inhabitants. So, notice the stronger wording in the Article Two, as will tend to facilitate the conservation and conserve adequate provisions for. However, in the purpose statement for the I-1 special, affording maximum practicable degree of protection of property values. So, when we take this all together, and also if there's a list of requirements, stringent requirements for such, for quarrying, right? And one of those, Section Two subsection two-point-one-five, is a rehabilitation plan, all right? It has a long list of things, thou shouts, and Part D, the method of disposing of any equipment and structures used in the operation of the excavation upon completion of the excavation. So, the whole purpose of the I-1 special could be summarized as do what you have to do to dig the rock, but make every effort to minimize the impact on the environment and surrounding property, and put things back as close as possible when you're done. So, I-1 special is a temporary, it's a allowable temporary spot zoning. They knew more, more times than not, a quarry is going to have to be put somewhere amongst a bunch of other land uses that don't fit. But, the argument made here is we have to put it back the way we found it. So, and all of you have a, a letter that I sent you that contains in greater detail, but I'm going to summarize for the sake of time. So, what is being asked now is to put shop, a, uh, office truck, things that are not required for mining rock. I know they're not required because they've been mining rock for five years, and there's a huge chunk of that hill that's missing. So, it is not necessary for the mining of rock, and it is inconsistent with the surrounding zoning. Now, at some point, some years down the road, that quarry is going to cease to be digging rock.
Neil Merritt, I have to stop you. Your five minutes are over. We'd let you actually go over Mr. Miller. So, five minutes is what you're allowed. Anybody else who'd like to come up and speak, that is Sergeant Al. Yes, please. Please state your name and address the commission, please.
Hi, my name is Kim Cunningham, and I live at fifty-two seventy-eight Green Hall Road. We moved here in Franklin County about a year and a half ago. I used to come down here for work, and I just fell in love with the area, absolutely love the area. So, when the opportunity came for me to transfer down here, we jumped on it, one-hundred percent. Sold what we had, put our life savings into our dream home, a little one-and-a-half acre lot right by the woods where we're going to retire. I didn't know at the time the price of living so close to a mine quarry. I know that now, and I'm paying that price. However, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. One day, they're going to end, they're going to run out of rock to, to mine, and we'll have that quiet peaceful home, you know, that we worked so hard and dreamed for. If this zone is changed, there's no light at the end of the tunnel for us. We're living next to an industrial area. It's going, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. Before I came, I did a Google search for industrial areas for sale in Franklin County and found no less than six. This is not necessary. This is not required. You can't swing a dead cat around without hitting a Dollar General, and it'll be the same thing way with an industrial park. We don't, I don't know that this is a good fit for Franklin County, and I know it's not a good fit for, for the folks that live in that area down the street or on Green Hall Road. I know that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in favor? Would you address your comments at the podium?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Clifton Miller. I actually reside at four-eighty-eight Stovall Hall Road in Belvidere, Tennessee. I am the agent for Tinsley, work for Tinsley, and they've asked me to speak tonight, give you a few facts. For those of you who were on this commission five, six years back when the Tinsley's got the rezoning of the, of the quarry property, the Tinsley's asked me to say thank you for your efforts, thank you for what you did for the county, and to give you a little bit of information about what you did for this county. In making that decision, Tinsley's become the largest quarrying operation in the county by far. And last year, Tinsley Limestone collected four-hundred-ninety-six thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars in sales tax, of which the county received a hundred-and-twenty thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. Last year, we paid sixty-six thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars in severance tax. That money went straight into the road fund. The county didn't have to share it with the state or anyone else. It went straight in. Over the past three years, we have represented between seventy-three and seventy-nine percent of all severance tax paid into the county road fund. And I suspect, once I have the twenty-twenty-four data completed, I suspect it will be somewhere probably around eighty percent of the severance tax paid into the county. So, Tinsley Limestone is a, a good business, it's a large business, and it impacts the county and, and helps the county in, in an economic manner. We also stay abreast of, of aggregate prices. One of the things that Tinsley's told this commission is that competition within the county would help keep prices down. We estimate that based on the count, the price of aggregate in the surrounding counties, that aggregate in Franklin County is two to four dollars less in this county than it is in surrounding counties. I can tell you that based upon our production, two dollars per ton equates to one million dollars in savings each year to the people of Franklin County who buy stone. I'll say that again, two dollars equates to one million dollars per year of savings to the people who buy stone in this county. So, I think Tinsley Limestone has been a great addition to this county and is a good economic partner with the county. What we're asking to do is the fifteen acres that is to the south and along Green Hall Road, we're asking for it to be rezoned. We need to build an office, we need to build a shop, and the zoning department said that we need that fifteen acres rezoned so we can build an office and we can build a shop there along Green Hall Road. And that's what we're asking you to do tonight, is to rezone it, so then we can go to Boza and get a special use permit so we can complete those tasks. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me before I leave?
Just to be clear, there's not going to be any mining of rock in the area you're talking about here, right? The fifteen acres?
The fifteen acres. There is a slight corner. You see where that corner protrudes? The mine could, as it, as it proceeds back, could cross it.
Not up on the highway there.
No, 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 no. No, all's going to be occupied there with, the Tinsley's owner residence there, and those are, that house is occupied by resident, or, sorry, an employee of the company, and probably will be for the foreseeable future. And then, there'll be a shop and an office there in that large field.
Y'all find a lot of trees back when you first started to kind of hide some of the stuff. Y'all want to maybe plant some more trees between you and the neighbor?
We can. What we, the site plan that I have worked on includes a landscaping barrier between the buildings and the road. There's already Bradford pears that border the driveway going up to the residence, and all of this will be between that driveway and the quarry berm, which has already got trees. So, we can plant more along the road, but there seems to be a good stand of trees there right now. So, that's, that's the general plan.
Well, one of the complaints I got was that the, the neighbor could look over there and they, they could see trees. Now, they like that, so they want to continue to see trees.
Yeah, we're not, we have no plans of taking the trees along the driveway down. I've stayed off of those intentionally to keep them, and then the plan is to plant trees along the road. Any other questions? Thank you.
About having questions for our planning and zoning?
I'd like for him to come up and tell us why his office approved it.
Sure.
Eric Bradford, planning director, Franklin County. My office didn't approve it. The planning commission approved it, or recommended for approval to you, you folks. We did recommend approval through our office, our staff did, based on one simple thing, or actually two things. One, it's generally compliance with the zoning resolution because of number two. That industrial or I-1 special zoning already exists on that one parcel of land, and it being the same parcel that is being requested for additional rezoning, that's why the recommendation was made to approve, based on nothing else but that.
Is there any other designation besides the industrial that could be applied, some commercial?
Uh, not. You could probably go to a commercial, but you're talking about splitting the zoning up again. For zoning applications, you really want to make sure it's unified. This is one of those things that's, that's allowed in I-1, because it's allowed in I. So, you kind of have some carryover between the, the individual zoning districts within one component. I know you had, y'all had some questions. Let me, let me go a little bit further on some of this. I know you asked about trees and such as that. When or if, I have to say if this measure passes, then the next step is a site plan, plot plan for their idea of what they want to do. At that point in time, the board of zoning appeals can impress upon them to make sure there's some, I would, some more trees or whatever we need, and it's needed to make sure there is some cover for that. Until, and I clarify this too, until this rezoning is or is not passed, there's no point to do a site plan. So, that's one reason this comes first, then site plan, then other things. So, it all takes a measured steps toward everything. I'm sorry, I cut you.
Is there any reason why that first, that piece wasn't rezoned originally with the rest of it? It's one parcel?
There are two pieces of that parcel that has not been rezoned. That one, and I, I couldn't tell you why, this was done before I was here. There's a parcel to, as you can see on the southeastern portion of that, that property or southwestern portion of property, is more mountain land, which is not rezoned I-1 either. Probably not inhabitable for anything but deer, snake, and bear, maybe a fox or two. But, that front portion there, I couldn't tell you why, but that's probably the flattest ground on that whole piece of ground. Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Merritt, any comments? Mr. Barrett, I'm going to give you just a second if you got another comment, and then we're going to move on. Go ahead.
Okay. Kind of a procedural question. So, the application was for I, just industrial, which is appropriate because these are permanent structures if they want to put there. So, why was the staff report for industrial special and not industrial?
I'll return to the podium.
For unification of zoning, it's I-1. I-1 would be the request.
I didn't answer the question. One more time, if you don't mind me.
The zoning is I-1. The request is for I-1, for unification of zoning.
Anybody else? Any questions?
I still don't understand. For unification of zoning, what do you mean?
So that the entire parcel is I-1, not split zoned, as it is now with A agricultural and industrial I-1 special.
It's the same point, which you might say all the same thing.
Yes, sir.
You may say, we're going to move on. I just.
Sir, this is actually pretty important.
Yeah.
We're, everybody that comes in and addresses the commission goes by the same road, and I'm going to ask that you go by those roads. Everybody's a body foul.
Sir.
That's the way we're going to do it. That's, that's all.
You told me I could play the entire recording.
No, I didn't. I told you you have five minutes to speak.
No, you told me that before this meeting.
I told you you have five minutes to speak. Now, that's the rule set forth by the commission that everybody adheres to, and that's what we're going to do.
Can we listen to that recording?
No, sir.
You told me I could.
We're going to move on. I told you, you had the right to come here and speak.
You told, I have a.
I know you weren't telling me. We're going to move on. It's not a question. It's not a question. A motion, and a second, is to approve the zoning, Tinsley rezoning. Motion approved by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion or questions? Please cast your vote. You wish to change your vote, do so now, please. Please tally the vote. Fourteen to two, motion carries. That takes us to number three on the agenda, approval of the minutes for February eighteen, twenty-twenty-five. Motion approved by Commissioner Hand, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Number four, reported to the finance director. We'll form the agenda. Motion approved by Commissioner Riddle, second by Commissioner Sheddard. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. You wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Takes us to number five on the agenda, recommendations of communications, point seven-nine. Number six, committee and department reports. If it pleases the commission, we can combine those, A through D. Motion approved by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner Bauer. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Takes us to number eight, new business, resolution three-A zero-three-two-five, resolution amending the Franklin County Board of Education general fund budget for Franklin County. Motion approved by Commissioner Bauer, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion or questions? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. That takes us to number nine, resolution three-B zero-three-two-five, resolution amending the Franklin County Board of Education general fund budget for Franklin County, fifty-two thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Motion approved by Commissioner Mellon, second by Commissioner Hand. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. You wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. That takes us to number ten on the agenda, new business, resolution three-C, three-two-five, resolution amending the general library solid waste fund budget for Franklin County for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Motion approved by Commissioner Bauer, second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further questions or discussion? Please, if not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Takes us to item number eleven on the agenda, resolution three-D zero-three-two-five, resolution amending the highway fund budget of Franklin County for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Motion approved by Commissioner Sheddard, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further questions or discussion? Please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Please the commission, number twelve, new business resolution are all multi, multi-year lease for compiers, that would be three-E through three-H, we can combine those. Motion approved by Commissioner Hand, second by Commissioner Lysman. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, tally the vote. I'm sorry. Somebody stood missed the vote. There we go. Motion passes. Here it is. Number thirteen, new business resolution, in front of compliance, federal title C regulations for Franklin County, motion approved by Commissioner Mellon, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Number fourteen, resolution three-J, three-two, zero-three-two-five, resolution to request unplanned balance account submitted to state areas under Unclaimed Property Act. Motion approved by Commissioner Hand, second by Commissioner Lysman. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Number fifteen, resolution three-K zero-three-two-five, resolution to approve annual review of debt management policies, cash flow statements of Franklin County. Motion approved by Commissioner Davidson, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. That takes us to item number sixteen, new business resolutions. Please the commission, we can combine three-I through three-P, all highways. Motion approved by Commissioner Riddle, second by Commissioner Kelly. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Number eighteen, oh wait, seventeen, I'm sorry. These two resolutions could be combined, they're toward the speed limit of two different roads. If you look at the actual resolutions, the name at the top of the resolution is correct. The name down in the verbiage will have to be changed. I think we can pass this contingent upon that being corrected down in the verbiage that everybody knows the road, that's just a type of rapid. Motion approved by Commissioner Sheddard, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Number eighteen, resolution three-S zero-three-two-five, resolution to reduce commercial vehicle, personal motor vehicle travel only in over certain county roads. It's my recommendation to the commission we take this until further legal investigation can be conducted. Motion to do that, table by Commissioner Hand, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further questions or discussion? Comments? If not, please cast your vote. Yeah, we're out. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries, sixteen-O, or, resolution is taken. Number nineteen, resolution three-T zero-three-two-five, resolution to declare items of surplus property. Motion approved by Commissioner Mellon, second by Commissioner Davidson. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally your vote. Tally the vote, I'm sorry. Motion carries. Number twenty, new business resolution, approve of social media policy for Franklin County Board Handbook. Motion approved by Commissioner Mellon, second by Commissioner Bauer. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Motion carries. Twenty-one, elections to deployment industrial board appointment Johnny Hughes. Motion approved by Commissioner Riddle, second by Commissioner Hosh. Any further discussion or questions? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now, please tally the vote. Please tally the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Number 22, election and performance, approval of 700 republics. Most approved by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner Davidson. Any further discussion or questions? If not, please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now. Please tally the vote. Motion passing, one or standing. This is a portion of the commission meeting, we open it up for fellow comment, or any fellow's comment. Chairman, I'm motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned by Commissioner Riddle, second by Commissioner Davidson. Any further questions or discussion? Please cast your vote. Wish to change your vote, do so now. Please tally the vote. Here. We are in general, and I would remind everyone, we have to.